Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the city of Palm Coast. A budget hearing today is Wednesday, September 5, 15 p.m. We are in the John Nett's community wing of City Hall. I'm officially calling this meeting to order. If you would, please stand with me for the pledge of allegiance and a short moment of silence.
Mr. Mayor, if we could, can I ask consensus from the council to have an extended moment of silence for Charlie Kirk, please?
Yes, sir.
My pledge of allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you have it done so already, please silence all the vices. Ms. Cook, could you call it a roll, please?
Mayor Norris.
Here.
Vice Mayor Pontieri.
Present.
Councilmember Gambara.
Here.
Councilmember Miller.
Here.
Councilmember Sullivan.
Here.
All members are present.
Thank you, ma'am. We'll start out with public participation. See very few people here. Either of you gentlemen have anything to say? Any public comments?
Yes.
Yes, sir. The mic is yours.
I'm actually here for a few of my neighbors today because they couldn't make it tonight.
State your name for the record, sir.
Richard Drogas, at location 21 Flaxton Lane, Palm Coast. I'm here to talk about the increases again that's being proposed. I know Flagler County is a good part of that, but one of the things, and I want to, I'm going to the meeting tomorrow, is that the taxes have gotten so bad on property tax here. And let me give you an example. I live in Pasadena, Maryland, and Maryland is one of the highest tax states in the country. My property tax for a 2,800 square foot house was $4,300 a year, okay? And I had a larger lot. Right now, I'm paying $5,000 for the tax, and it's going to go to 6,200 because they got a 21 and 1/2% increase. I was told when I spoke to the appraiser last year that that 5,000 represented the pool I installed, but now I'm told it's not. He said, oh, you don't have to worry about it. You're here two years now. Your taxes are going to be pretty steady from here on out. Anyway, that being said, you know, and again, I'm just going to do this for the record because it's important. I know this is basically about the city of Palm Coast, but the taxes, you put the insurance together, but it costs a lot more for auto and home insurance down here. You look at all the other things that, I'm sorry, I wrote a list up, but not very prepared. I apologize. I know I'm on the clock. So you've got the water and sewage here. My water bill back at home per quarter was $120. I pay a hundred, minimum, $121 every month now. And I can't get my swells taken care of. They've been trying different things. I understand that they went to six different other locations to get some ideas to fix that problem. And when I talked to them, they all said, well, it ain't quite what we want, or it's not like the perfect fix. So it's like they're looking for the perfect fix. So I can say one thing, Ms. Stevens back here at least tried something last with sand and stuff. I didn't think it was going to work, but she took a shot, but apparently it worked in some other neighborhoods. So it's a good thing because it costs the city a ton of money to clean these swells out every year. If there is an investment of putting things down like whether it's corrugated pipe or concrete, a small swell of concrete, and the water would overflow for the rain water, for the drinking water, that would work great. But nobody's willing to do that. And then you've got dirt, and you've got sod. So it all does is clog up over the year, and then we repeat the process over and over and over again, and nobody, and I've spoke to the engineer many times, and we had a lot of ideas, and nobody wants to touch it. It's like, well, it ain't quite what we want. They'll do this, it'll do that. But nobody wants to try. Just even the polid of one street. Because it's like they're afraid it might work. I don't know what we're paying engineers for. Because they can't figure it out. Why do you have engineers then? It's just incredible, ridiculous.
All right, sir. Thank you. Your time has expired. Anyone else for public comment? Seeing no one. Yes, ma'am.
I have to come up there.
Yes, ma'am. If it's an item on the agenda, please wait until the agenda. If it's just open comments on something unrelated to the current item.
What's on the agenda? I live here in Palm Coast. We have been living here for a year.
Yes, ma'am.
And I love this area.
State your name for the record, ma'am.
I'm sorry?
State your name for the record.
Sharon Moss.
Yes, ma'am.
And the proposed tax.
We're going to be talking about that, and we will.
You going to explain it?
We'll have someone help you with it.
This is very difficult to understand.
Yes, ma'am.
And my question was, with all the new commerce and all the new houses being put in, why is there going to be another increase? It just seems like there's so much money coming into the city of Palm Coast. Why raise the taxes to hurt most of the people that are on restricted incomes? And that was my question.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. Anyone else for public comment? Seeing no one come forward, we'll bring you back to the dice. City manager, if you could get someone that's versed in our trim notice to speak to that young lady there. And you have any follow-up for the swell issues for his house?
I believe Ms. Lynn was listening. She's working on it.
You got that? Ms. Stevens? Okay, thank you very much. Okay, any comments from the city council regarding the public comments?
One other thing I would just say, just in general, without going into detail, make sure if you're a new resident of Palm Coast, do your homestead, get it established with the Texas Legislature's office as soon as possible. It will save you a lot of money. If you miss a year, it really does hurt.
Yes. Your exemptions, make sure you have all your exemptions that you're supposed to have, and that you discuss it with the property appraiser. They are very user-friendly over there. So they will help you out as much as possible. Anything else from the council? No one has anything else to say? Okay, we're going to move forward with item E, presentations. City manager?
Yes, Mayor. City council, as Ms. Alves and Ms. Ragsdale come to the presentation table, we'll be presenting the final proposed budget for fiscal year 2526 and revised fiscal year for 2024 and 2025 budget. We have a short presentation to review all of the funds and be happy to answer any questions that you have for this evening.
Thank you, ma'am.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Helena Alves, Finance Director. I'm here with Gwen Ragsdale, our Budget and Procurement Manager. And as outlined from Ms. Johnson, we're here to present to you the fiscal year 2025 revised budget, the proposed tentative millage rate, and the proposed budget for fiscal year 2026. As you recall, we were here before you on August 26th and did a detailed presentation on the proposed fiscal year 2026 budget by department and by fund. We received guidance from council at August 26 to reduce the millage rate or to reduce the tax rate for fiscal year 2026. So what you're going to see today presented to you includes that reduction. This is a summary of our general fund revenues. We have four revenue sources that account for 93% of revenues, ad valorem state revenues, permits and fees, and charges for services. The ad valorem tax revenue accounts for 63%, and assuming a millage rate of 4.0893, it is anticipated to generate an additional 3.1 million. So this is the line item that was decreased from August 26th. As per your guidance, we reduced the tax rate by 0.110 of a mil. State revenues account for approximately 15% of revenues. These encompass half-sent sales tax, state revenue sharing, communication services tax, business tax license, and the Section 175 fire pension revenues. Permits and fees, this category accounts for approximately 4% of revenues and includes planning and zoning permit fees as well as franchise fees, both gas and solid waste. Charges for services account for 11% of revenues. These include park and recreation fees, internal service allocations for city departments, as well as other miscellaneous charges. Do we have any questions on general fund revenues before we proceed?
No, ma'am.
Thank you. This is a breakdown of general fund expenditures. An overall increase of 6.4 million. Main drivers for the increase are as follows. The economic development budget was increased at city council's direction to account for incentives totaling 3% of the fiscal year 2025 original general fund budget. The planning budget increase includes six residential site development inspectors and the respective operational budgets moving from the stormwater fund. The fire department budget increase includes the needs associated with the two new fire stations coming online, the increase for the collective bargaining agreement approved by council earlier this year, as well as a new position for a fire inventory clerk. Law enforcement budget increase includes the Flagler County Sheriff's Office request to add the contractual increase as well as nine new deputies. The Sheriff's Office request is for five deputies starting October 1st and the additional four starting on April 1st. Streets maintenance budget requested increase is primarily driven by adding two maintenance workers and increases in street lighting costs. Parks and Recreation budget increase is a combination of moving the facilities' maintenance allocation to the department's budgets to better align costs, as well as a Thor Guard lightning detection system at the Southern Rack Center and pump station repairs at the golf course. Before we move forward, does council have any questions on general fund expenditures?
No questions.
We will now move to your proprietary funds. There have been no changes from your August 26 presentation. Department directors are available if you have any questions. We will begin with the Water and Wastewater Operating Fund increase of 23.7%. The main driver of this increase is the debt service associated with the proposed utility revenue bonds, as outlined in the gap rate study that was just approved by council. In addition, utilities is adding one new position for utility systems operator in wastewater and is increasing the R and R transfer according to the capital plan needs. Water and Wastewater Capital Fund was reviewed in detail by Carl Cody, with counsel by Carl Cody, sorry, and it is increasing at 289%. Includes several projects for R and R, as well as rehabilitation of the wastewater treatment plant number one. This is the fund that will allocate and the respective project expenditures. The stormwater budget decrease of 9% from previous year is due to a combination of capital projects that have been completed or carrying to next year, equipment loan purchases that are fiscal year 2025 only, and operational changes made. The budget includes five new full-time positions for four equipment operators and one temporary maintenance worker. It also includes the transfer of six FTEs to the General Fund Planning Division and a department reorganization that realigned the operations division with the maintenance and engineering divisions. Building Fund is decreasing by 10%. Main drivers are the freezing of two FTE positions, the deputy chief building official, and a building inspector position, as well as moving 0.3 of an FTE to the General Fund Code Department. Collection and Sanitation Fund budget has increased by 5.6% to accommodate the current contract for solid waste residential services, as well as funding a full year of the inspector position. Information Technology Enterprise Fund accounts for the fiber and cell tower revenues and expenditures. This fund has increased by 60% from previous year to include the fiber connection capital projects for Fire Station 26 and City Hall. Before we move forward, does council have any questions on proprietary funds?
Any questions? No, ma'am.
Okay, we will now move to the capital projects fund budget. Staff reviewed these in detail with council at the August 12 and August 26 workshops. The Transportation Impact Fee Fund budget is increasing by 29%. This budget includes 14.6 million for Matanzas Woods Parkway expansion, 7 million for Belterra safety improvements, 6 million for White View safety improvements, and 4.7 million for Palm Coast Parkway Extension Loop Road. The Town Center Transportation Impact Fee Fund decreased by 26.6%, not the 100% that's on the slide, and it's due to the Royal Palms Parkway project carrying to fiscal year 2026. The Recreation Impact Fee Fund budget is increasing by 99%. This budget includes 1.3 million for Grand Swamp Trail Phase 2, 2.2 million for Waterfront Park, 1.5 million for Indian Trail Sports Complex parking expansion, as well as 2 million for the Aquatic Center. The Fire Impact Fee Fund budget is decreasing by 23.8%. This includes 6 million for Fire Station 26 and 6 million for Fire Station 22 replacement. The capital projects fund budget is increasing by 24%. The largest project in this budget is the Maintenance Operations Complex at 13.9 million. The Developer Special Projects Fund budget for 2026 is 122,000. There's 50,000 for the Tree Fund and 72,275 transferred to the Streets Improvement Fund. Before we move forward, does council have any questions on the capital funds?
Any questions? No, ma'am.
Okay. This is a snapshot of the major capital projects included in the upcoming budget. The full details were reviewed at the August 26 presentation and are available on the city's website. This is a summary of all other remaining funds. There were no changes from your August 26 presentation. The largest changes are associated with the American Rescue Plan Act Fund that should be fully expended by September 30th and will not be carrying to fiscal year 2026. And the increase in the Streets Improvement Fund budget that includes $1 million transfer from the general fund reserves for the paving program. Before we move forward, does council have any questions on these funds?
Any questions? No, ma'am.
Okay, we will now review the Internal Service Funds. These were reviewed in detail at the August 26 workshop, and there have been no changes. Fleet Fund is decreasing by 7%. This fund fluctuates depending on capital purchases under the fleet replacement program. The Facilities Management Fund has increased by 4% and includes the request of one FTE for a trades worker. The Information Technology Internal Services Fund budget includes reductions through the elimination of selected software platforms, decreases in consulting, training, and operational expenses, as well as eliminating one FTE. The Health Insurance Fund increases by 13% is due to regular cost increases, includes claims, admin fees, stop-loss insurance, wellness programs, and other related expenses. Does council have any questions on these funds?
Any questions? No, ma'am.
Okay. This is a big picture of all fund expenditures. You can see that the total for the funds is approximately 696.4 million dollars. This represents an increase of 65.2% from your fiscal year 2025 adopted budget. Utility capital accounts for 242.5 million or 47%. Water and Wastewater Utility account for 16 million or 13%. Capital Project, Streets Improvement, and Impact Fee Funds account for 109 million or 16%. The General Fund accounts for 67 million or 10%. Stormwater accounts for 42 million or 6%. And the budget of all other accounts for the remaining 8% of the total budget. Are there any questions before we move forward?
Well, I just am always amazed by that bottom number there on the proposed 26 budget, 696 million dollars. A lot of money.
Well, it's deceptive, too, because it's all that.
I don't.
No, ma'am. Go ready.
I don't think everybody knows.
Okay, we will now go over the E-Truth and Millager trim. So this is a look at your millage options. The rollback rate is 4.0035. The adopted maximum millage rate is 4.1893, and for fiscal year 2026. And the proposed rate for the fiscal year 2026 budget is 4.0893. So next steps is to adopt the fiscal year 26 budget and millage rate at your final public hearing on Wednesday, September 24th at 5:15 here at City Hall. So we want to remind the public where they can find all of our budget information. As in previous years, we have set up the fiscal year 2026 budget preparation link on the city's website. And this concludes our presentation.
Thank you, ma'am. Any comments by the council?
I just wanted to kind of talk about the different terms here, terminology, and especially given the commentary about different states and their tax rates and things like that. So if you could go back to the trim slide, Helena. So on your rollback rate, essentially what this is, is that with property tax or property value increases, this would be the millage rate that would have to be enacted to where the city would not collect a single more dollar than last year's budget. Last year's millage rate, you see 2025 adopted millage 4.1893, so that was the tax rate the city enacted last year. And then we had a proposal to remain exactly the same with property tax or property value increases. That would mean the budget would increase. And then what we did based on the budget that was prepared and where we kind of had some wiggle room in terms of priorities, looked at a 10th of a mil drop. So that's where you see that 2026 highlighted proposed millage rate. So we're dropping the tax rate by a 10th here because it roughly equals about $1 million of wiggle room that we found in kind of changing priorities, determining where we wanted to focus, if we could give some back to the residents. So ultimately, the consensus from the council was to move forward with reducing it a 10th of a mil for the city rate. And I know your tax bills probably have 11 different rates on them between varying authorities, and we can't control that. You know, we can advocate, just like you guys, to, you know, other authorities that have that taxable rate that they can enact, but we can't control that or tell them to reduce it or not increase it in any way. So that's where we're at. So that represents kind of a halfway point between not collecting any more taxes than the previous year, you know, including, just like anybody, a homeowner deals with CPI and the cost of living, things go up. Same thing with the city. You know, when we employ, contract people, do all those things, costs go up. So it's very difficult to just maintain the same budget every single year. But I think we found a good middle ground of reducing the tax rate against not increasing anything at all. And so that's where we are. And that's just me trying to explain out there kind of what this looks like. Because Florida uses some strange terminology, and in your trim notice, you'll note that they call it a tax increase, right? Even though we've reduced your tax rate. And that's because Florida defines a tax increase as, as a whole throughout the city, if we collect one more dollar, that's a tax increase. So that's why the trim notice says we raised your taxes, but really we reduced your rate. So it's this, it doesn't make much sense for, you know, a person that doesn't know that to understand what it means. And so faced with CPI and cost of living, essentially, if we were to just maintain cost of living for the city in terms of the cost of services and everything like that, they would always say we're increasing the taxes. And that's not necessarily the case in terms of what we would generally think is your rate, right? And then that's coupled with your property value. And so that's not a function of the city. That's a function of the property appraiser and how they value. And as mentioned before, there was talking about homesteading and exemption. So that allows for a cap on the value of your property. So even in times when, say, the property appraiser believes your house to have increased by 10%, they can only raise the value by 3% per year as long as you're homesteaded. That doesn't work on your second or third property if you happen to be lucky enough to have those. But for your primary residence, that cap exists. And then there's also exemptions in terms of dollar value reductions. I believe it's, is it 50,000? Or is, what's the value of 50,000? That's reduced from your appraised value from the property appraiser as part of Florida law as well. And there's been some proposals at the state to increase that reduction based on varying factors, whether you're a senior, retired, or things like that, disabled. So there's been discussion about property taxes in general at the state level and how that works. And then also, obviously, here in terms of what we set our rate at. But just wanted to take a little time to kind of explain what these different rates mean and how they come to you. And it says it's a tax increase, and we worked hard to make sure that we were reducing the rate. So it's a little difficult, but that's the state definition by law, is that it's a tax increase if we collect one more dollar than last year.
Thank you. So thank you for explaining that. No, I'm really proud of this budget. I know, you know, obviously, it probably seems from the public that we've kind of zipped right through this thing, but that's because we've spent several months going through this, having workshops, working with staff, going back and forth a lot. I want to thank staff again for their efforts and council for your efforts. I think we've really distilled some important priorities on this council, one being water and wastewater infrastructure, two being stormwater infrastructure, and three being public safety. And when I think about what the role of government is, those are what the role of government should be, infrastructure, public safety. And then I think a really important thing that we have kind of just, from my perspective, icing on the cake, has been able to move forward with YMCA. That's a really strong pillar that's going to be in this community. I think it's really important that we bring YMCA here, and we were able to do that and still lower the tax rate. So that's a lot of hard work that went into that. So thank you to everybody up here. Thank you to staff. I brought my own trim notice because I'm really grateful that you went through it. If you look at your trim notice, for those who are interested, the county public hearing is tomorrow. So their proposed tax rate per the trim notice is 7.9945%. And then they have a line item for voted at 0.1855%. And their meeting is tomorrow at 5:01 at the Government Services Building. So to the extent anybody wants to go to that meeting and, you know, hear their presentation and maybe speak during their meeting, that is your opportunity to do so. They obviously have some challenges as far as some things that they're trying to fund as well. So I just encourage everybody to really stay involved and look at the work that your county is doing as well. But thank you to all of the work that's been put into this.
Thank you, ma'am. Yes, sir.
Just since this is my first budget that I've gone through at the city, but I just completed eight years of doing the budgets at the county. completed eight years of doing the budgets at, at the county. And I will say I was very impressed. Sometimes you hear things in the news that, that aren't necessarily the way things are. The staff here has done a great job on this, on this budget. I think it's tight based on what we've been presented and worked on. And I agree with what the other members have said. But thank you very much to the staff. I think you've done a great job and I can, it's easy for me to compare it to what happened in the last eight years at the county. So thank you.
Thanks, sir. Yes, Councilman Gambaro.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Now, just to the staff, I just want to say thanks for presenting a great budget. And more importantly, a great budget that's aligned with the policy decisions that this council has put forward, not only for, you know, the next year, but is also aligned with our vision for 2050, our comprehensive plan, our capital improvement projects and everything. Everything's aligned. And so you don't always see that or you can't always accomplish that as you move, you know, progressively through your budgets. But I think we're on a great path and I just wanted to say thanks again for a great budget.
Thank you, sir. Anything else? We'll open it. You got one more?
Yeah, just one more thing. And I also wanted to note, in terms of, you know, a downward moving millage rate, just historically Palm Coast, I've looked up our comparison to similar sized cities within the state and it was populations between 100 and 150,000. It came back with 13 cities and we have the lowest millage rate of any of those cities by not a little. I believe the next closest was over five. And then the, in terms of time, over time, I believe a decade ago, the millage rate, you know, and obviously the councils change, right? So it, it takes work through the years for multiple people to align to try to reduce those rates. But it was, I believe, 4.9 around a decade ago. So it's, it's been going down, I think, three of the last four years it's gone down. So over time, this millage rate has been going downward, not upward. And, and so I, I think it shows, you know, what the residents here want. You know, we live in a fairly conservative community that, that values low property taxes and things like that. So just trying to, to kind of, you know, enact those, those wants from the people.
If I may, just really quickly, Mayor, I, because I do want to recognize the fact that water rates have gone up. So, you know, that's the elephant in the room. And, and, you know, if we could go back probably 10, 15 years and start addressing some of the water issues that maybe were not addressed in the way they should have been, I'm sure all of us would probably choose to do so, but we don't have that option. So we've been kind of thrown in to make some tough decisions and unfortunate, and, you know, we were tasked with initially raising the utility rates a lot more and we chose not to do that. So I commend the council for being willing to make that hard decision and working to cut back in other areas that we can cut back in. This is the third year I've been, been on council doing the budget and it's the third year we've been able to roll back the tax rate. So I am proud of that. And, you know, I, I hope that the improvements that we've chosen to move forward with in our wastewater system will, you know, have a return on investment for the residents. I think it will. I think that's money well spent. It's not a pet project. It's, it's a necessity. It is public safety. It is infrastructure. It is economic development. It is health for our residents. It's all those things that we are responsible to give to you all as our residents. So I commend you all for making those tough decisions because that hasn't always been the willingness of the board. So thank you for that. And I would be remiss if I did not thank Lauren Johnston for spearheading what is an excellent budget. And you, I think this is your first year doing the full budget, right? Second year for the full budget? Oh, okay. Well, good for you then. That's awesome. So now you can put that on your resume, second year of full budget. So this is the best budget that I, I've seen in three years. And, and, you know, I followed city council prior and I'm, I think this is the best budget we've had in a while. So again, just wanted to, I don't, I, I don't want to completely pat us all on the back because we still do have to thank the residents for being willing to help us fund these things. This is your money. So thank you for, for believing in us and trusting us with making these types of decisions.
Thank you, ma'am. We'll open it up. Public comment, city attorney?
If you would like, yes, sir.
Anyone, anyone like to make public comment? Okay, seeing no one come forward, we will now move to recess the council. We will recess the council and convene the SR 100 corridor CRA board. So we'll recess and we'll come back in order. We're back in order. Okay, item F, SR 100 corridor, SR, SR resolution. Ms. Ragsdale, do we have anything for that or did we just go with it?
So the CRA budget was reviewed as part of the city overall budget. Your estimated fiscal year 2025 is $3,567,315. And your proposed for fiscal year 2026 is $3,336,344.
So Mayor, I think we're just looking for...
We're gonna have to have a motion and open up for public comment. So it's, so it's $3,336,344.
That is correct.
All right, thank you.
Mayor, I'll make a motion to adopt State Road 100 corridor community redevelopment agency resolution adopting the State Route 100 CRA tentative budget for the fiscal year 2025, 2026 and amending the budget for the fiscal year 2024, 2025.
Second. We got a second, public comment? Any public comment on the CR?
I just wanted to, I don't know if it's appropriate time. The comments on the budget about that one is...
We'll, we'll, we'll come back to that, sir. Okay. So seeing no one come forward, we'll bring it back. Any further comments or discussion from the council? Ms. Cook, please call the vote.
Vice Mayor Pontieri?
Yes.
Councilmember Gambaro?
Yes.
Councilmember Miller?
Yes.
Councilmember Sullivan?
Yes.
Mayor Norris?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, thank you. We're gonna adjourn the CR 100 corridor CRA board and reconvene the city council. We're back in session. City resolution, item G, resolution 2025, setting the tentative millage rate, the TRIM for the fiscal year 2025, 2026. And this is when I read my spiel, right? Okay. The city of Palm Coast proposes to levy a tentative millage rate of 4.0893 mils. This is an increase of 2.14% for the roll, from the rollback rate of 4.0035 mils. Okay, we will, any discussion from the council? We're gonna open this up for public comment and this will be his time, right attorney? Yes, sir, you can, you can comment now.
I'm gonna ask a bunch of questions because I'm on the clock. So I'm, and then maybe somebody can answer some of them. You know, as the other lady said, why, I mean, all the people have moved in just in Palm Coast, why, where's all that revenue? And we're still getting increases. That's what I want to know. What, what was the number in 2021 versus what the income is now, the, for the city? How much more money is it? We talk about percentages, the percentage lowers, but we all know it's still more money out of our pocket, no matter where you shape it. And don't get me wrong, I'm sure all, everybody worked hard here to get things where they are. But I need to understand why we buy a whole fleet of trucks. I mean, brand new trucks out there from Palm Coast, the city of Palm Coast, and I mean, they're crew cabs and that's a lot of money. I'd like to know how much money they spent for that this year. When I ran a business, we phased trucks in and out. We don't buy a whole bunch of them. We realized we have a budget. That's very frustrating as a consumer and a person who's going to raise taxes, you know? And if you haven't heard lately, Florida and Texas, people have canceled most of their, a lot, a lot of, 70% of the people that were going to be building have canceled their contracts in fear of the market and everything else. But they're also learning how much more expenses there is here. I am shocked that it was this much to live here. I, I'd be better off, believe it or not, in Maryland. I would, tax wise and everything else. But I don't want to live in a liberal state, okay? And I could appreciate, and I want to say something very positive. I, I'm so happy you all stood to the pledge of allegiance and everything in a moment because we need that everywhere in this country. And I appreciate that. The biggest concern I have with that, the amount of money that was spent on those trucks, we, you know, if we phased them, we, maybe we can get a tax break. I know that in your mind, you're doing that to a degree or keeping it close. And of course tomorrow, Flagler County meeting I'll be at, and I know they're the biggest culprits, but we have to start somewheres and, and their services in the city. I like our roads, our inner structures. I ain't seen no changes. I've been here three years and I can see all these roads all cracked up. And part of the reason is because these heavy trucks coming in building new houses. All those revenues, hookup fees, that's a lot of money. I really liked, somebody give me the answer to that question on the trucks and since 2021 to now what the increased revenue is for Palm, city of Palm Coast. And how much all those trucks cost? Because everybody, including myself, is thinking, we should get up with all these car, people moving in. I thought myself, we should be getting a tax cut. The revenue is pouring in. So maybe the money's being spent and maybe people aren't looking at how you can cut expenses. I don't know. I don't see the books, but I love to look at them. But that's beside the point. If you can answer some of those questions, it'd be greatly appreciated. Thank you for your time.
Yes, sir. Anyone else for public comment, sir? Thank you. Yeah, it's, it's a quite detailed process, sir, but we, we are a conservative council and we've done the best we can to keep, keep your costs down as a resident. Your disadvantage is you're just now moving into the city and, and the property value for your house compared to mine i- is going to be quite different because we have, we have protected value that, that builds up over the years for longer, longer residents. So people that are moving in now, they are going to pay a high rate. That's, that's just the nature of the beast. The law, the longer you're here, the, the lower your taxes are going to be compared to your neighbor. And I can tell you right now, if you, if you, if you're in an established neighborhood, if, say you build a house, look at your tax rate and then look up, look up your neighbor's TRIM rate and see what their, their TRIM notice is. It's, it's going to be a, a great deal of difference if they have been here for 15, 20 years. So newcomers are going to be taxed more. It's just, it's just based on the property value of the home. And I will say that I think county takes a little bit too much too. So you can go over and beat them up tomorrow.
The newer ones come in like the stuff, her tax, when his revenue is so much more, where's all that money?
The city manager, I, could you, could you point him into where our website is where he could, if he wants to pour in the numbers? And also we've got Mr. Mansell in the back who runs our fleet. He does a great job in running our fleet and it is phased in over time. He does, he does an excellent job, but I'm, I'm sure he could, he could address some of your questions.
Ms., Matt, raise your hand where he can see who you are. Mr. Mansell can explain our fleet management service. Thank you, sir. Okay, any further, no further public comments, we'll bring it back to the dais. Any closeout comments by the council?
I was just gonna add to, I know we, we've addressed the fleet and, and essentially the, the cap on growth. So correct, the, the longer you're here, the more your actual value grows, but it doesn't, your, your taxable value doesn't grow nearly as much. So that's why there's a discrepancy. The property appraisers website is a great resource for what the mayor mentioned, where you can see kind of the valuations of, say, an established house that's been there 25 years that's very similar to yours. It'll show the taxable values of those. Also the TRIM notices, I believe, are public for everybody. So you can look up by address and things like that.
I realize that this is where the record, because my public one house is actually here. So I get what you're saying, so the city of Palm Coast, I recognize that, I just, it increases now. I know that we had done a homestead and we should only see a 3% increase now because we, I don't know that to be sure because it keeps on me last year, the pool was included, now it's...
It is a little weird when it, you're first doing it because your first year, it's not even the value of your home. If, if you're built, if you built a home, it's the value of your property and then the next year. And then also I don't think they, I think it's true that a pool doesn't add value to your home. Obviously it adds functional value, but yeah, exactly. So in terms of more residents, we should have a lot more revenue. Conversely, we also have a lot more expenses, right? So it costs more to provide services for more people. There's more taxing of the roads, infrastructure, things like that. So it's not one to one. And I'll tell you that it's really the way that we grow revenue that's less taxing on the residents is through commercial and industrial development. We, in particular, the city was designed as kind of a retirement community with some limited zoning and placement of those, those opportunities in terms of property. And then additionally, the ones that we do have that are available, they're not ready for development. They don't have utilities there, things like that. And that costs a lot of money. And so companies that do want to come in, they want to come, they want to make a decision and come in within six months. They don't want to wait three years for utilities to get there and things like that. So it puts us at a distinct disadvantage, but that's the direction our council has, has said that we want. That's why we've added incentives to our economic development budget because ultimately, and this number's been like beaten to death, but right now our ad valorem revenue, I think, is 92%, 8% residential versus commercial industrial. And that's not what a functional city has normally. It's, you know, 60, 40, 70, 30, something like that. Some, some cities that are highly industrial, much higher even. And because those properties are taxed at their real value, they don't have these exemptions and caps and things like that, they, they grow as cost of living grows, whereas the residential revenue doesn't grow unless more people are moving in. And so what happens is the only way, if you can't build, bring in more commercial and industrial, the only way to meet those shortfalls in terms of budget is to raise taxes. So we have to be highly focused on being lean, you know, in terms of our expenditures, but also growing the revenue on that commercial and industrial side so that we never have to consider raising our tax rates. We can continue to try to reduce them over time as we've been doing in the past.
I want to comment back to that, what you guys are talking about, the cost of living. A lot of people, I don't know what the percentage of people retired and who want a fixed income here, they have to deal with their fixed income and they don't need additional income. I know you gotta take care of your employees and there's also...
Mr. Mayor, I'm gonna interject finally and we need to move on.
We have, we have to move on, but we, we, we can have a discussion after.
Yeah, feel free to reach out to me. Back and forth typically is, is a no-go.
Yes, okay. Okay, the city of Palm Coast proposes to adopt a tentative millage rate of 4.0893 mils. Can I get a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second. We got a second. We've already had public discussion. Ms. Cook, could you please call the vote?
Vice Mayor Pontieri?
Yes.
Councilmember Gambaro?
Yes.
Councilmember Miller?
Yes.
Councilmember Sullivan?
Yes.
Mayor Norris?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. We are moving on to item G4, resolution 2025 establishes, establishes the tentative budget for the fiscal year 2025, 2026 and amends the, the fiscal budget 2024, 2025 budget. You got anything on that? Helena, will we just move on?
Yes, please.
All right, thank you. Okay, the city of Palm Coast proposes to adopt a tentative budget with a total appropriated expenditures and revenues of $696,444,327. Okay, we're gonna have to open this up for public comment. Any public comment? Seeing no one come forward, we'll bring it back to the dais. Next action, the city of Palm Coast proposes to adopt, adopt a tentative budget of $696, Can I get a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Got a motion to approve, got a second public discussion. Any public participation? Okay, we'll move on. All right, the public hearing to adopt the final millage rate and budget is scheduled for September 24th.
We need to adopt the resolution first.
Oh, I'm sorry. My bad. Call the vote, Ms. Cook.
Vice Mayor Pontieri?
Yes.
Councilmember Gambaro?
Yes.
Councilmember Miller?
Yes.
Councilmember Sullivan?
Yes.
Mayor Norris?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Sorry for my flub. The, the public hearing to adopt the final millage rate and budget is scheduled for September 24th, 2025 at 5:15 PM at the city council, city hall, community wing. Okay, that's it. We're gonna move on to our final public participation. Does anyone have, have any final comments? It seems like we've had more people in the past, the last two years.
We still have one more meeting.
This is, this is a good budget. It really is.
Okay. All right, seeing no one come forward for public comment, we'll bring it back to the dais for discussion of city council matters. the dais for discussion of city council matters. Not on the agenda. Anyone have anything? No one has anything? Okay.
I, I do.
I just got one thing. I, I had the opportunity to today, today to go to, it was an adult education class at the Whitney Laboratory at UF by the Marineland. And I really enjoyed it. It was, it was a great time. Got to, you know, participate in some science, look at some stuff under microscopes, things like that. So just wanted to highlight that they have youth and adult classes for people to participate if anybody's interested in that. And they're looking to expand that program as much as possible.
Thank you, sir. Vice Mayor, did you have something?
Yes, just quickly, obviously, walking in here, we, we got some very sad news, the loss of Charlie Kirk. So I just want to pray for his family and his friends, particularly his wife and children. Also want to pray for our country. This is something that we should not have to see in our lifetime or in our kids' lifetime. Somebody who was an advocate for American values stood up for, I think, so many things that this country was built on. And it's a very sad day. So I pray for this council and our city every meeting, and we've talked about this, Mr. Miller, our councilman, about, you know, just really coming in here and praying that we can have a positive attitude and try to engage in respectful discourse even when we disagree. So I just really pray for our, our country and his family as we mourn his loss. It's, it's a grave loss for us.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else?
Just to jump back on that, I, I agree, you know, no matter where anybody falls politically on the spectrum, you know, respectful discourse is the most important thing and, and not getting to a point to where anger and hate and those things take hold. We should be able to all have opinions and talk about it and, you know, try to chart the best way forward without violence and things like that. So I just wanted to add that.
Maturity is the ability to solve issues and conflict without resorting to violence. So we have some immature people in our country. Anything else from the council? Matters from the attorney? You have anything? Back to you, city manager?
No, sir.
Nothing? Motion to adjourn?